7:04.
7:04, okay. A call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Lakeville, Massachusetts at 7:04 p.m. on Thursday, March 30th at the Lakeville Public Library. Is anyone in the audience recording? We know Lake Kim is recording. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. So, the first agenda item, we have ID sign group hearing. Are they here? Okay. Why don't you come on up, honey, open the hearing, and I'll turn it over to you to tell us what you're doing. So, "Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 30th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street upon the petition of ID sign group. Special permit is requested under 6.6.6.3 for an internally illuminated sign that will include non-illuminated changeable copy. The property site is 15 Main Street and is owned by Community Square Storage LLC." Applicant in assorted documents can be viewed in the planning department or by appointment, or also at the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals page. So, I have some correspondence in regards to this, but I think what I'd like to do first is turn it over to the applicant. Introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do.
My name is Bob Chrisapoli with ID Sign Group, and we're filing for a special permit to, we have a new monument sign going into Truce Value Storage at 15 Main Street. There's a new monument sign currently, they're requesting to try to have it illuminated with the reader board on the sign. So, I guess you have to file for a special permit to have the sign lit. That's what we're looking to hear from.
Okay. So, let's see, we do have a, some correspondence, a memo from the planning board dated March 24th, 2023. At their Thursday, March 9th, 2023 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board requests that the sign by law as written be followed. And I do not believe, okay, the rest of it's just hearing. We don't have a call to break, nobody else has a call.
I have pictures of the sign if you don't have it.
No, we have it here. So, okay, well, I'm gonna start off by opening it up for the board and see if anyone has any questions. It's pretty simple and straightforward, so we can do.
I have, my concerns are we've denied two or three people in here for the same thing, and it's all, and it's been the policy of the board to follow the sign guidelines as they were approved. I can't see why we're debating another one.
I guess to your point, Mr. Youngquist, we updated the sign bylaws, and if we wanted to keep things the way they were, we would not have made those changes, so.
Does this comply with the sign bylaw?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, but when the bylaw was changed, we just, it complies with it, but because it is gonna be lit, it needs a special permit. So, it's not larger or anything, it's just that, that's the requirement.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Concerns?
I have a question. Is there any signage gonna be added to the interior of the building? We have all the glass out front. Is it gonna be illuminated signage inside that?
No, we're making a non-illuminated belt sign that we're gonna apply for. What's going on in the building, it's not gonna light. So, basically, this is the only sign that would be light, lit on the property that we're gonna install.
Okay.
The other one that he's, we're designing, we're building, is a non-illuminated sign. So, he don't even have lights right now that are gonna even shine on that sign, it's just gonna be on the building. That's what we're doing.
This is the only illuminated sign on the property?
No, right now, no.
No, this will be, actually, this will be.
This will be the only illuminated sign on the property, and then a non-illuminated belt sign that's gonna look on the property, on the building.
Anyone else? Any comments from the audience? Anyone? Anyone like to make a motion, or?
I'll make a motion. Approve the special permit for the illumination of this sign, and for the manual changeable message board underneath.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Second. We have the motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We have to receive a lot.
Well, that's, Kathy's gonna tell you that right now.
See, they have 14 days to do the paperwork, then it will be submitted to the town clerk, then there's a 20-day appeal period. Once the period is done, you shall sign it, and then you can come pick it up and go record it.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Jamie?
I have a question. Do you want plans over here or over here now? Over there, if you like.
Just said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just saying.
Okay, the next hearing, "Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 30th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Renee Garbutt and Leo Pike Jr., special permit is requested under 7.4 and 6.1.3 to raise a portion of a pre-existing non-conforming house located in a non-conforming lot and construct a new dwelling. The new dwelling will contain three bedrooms, and the new portion, in one bedroom, and the existing portion, which will be an in-law accessory apartment. Property site is 29 Staples Shores Road. Applicant in assorted documents can be viewed in the planning department or by appointment at the zoning board of appeals, through the zoning board of appeals webpage." Okay, Jamie, I'm assuming you are representing the petitioner?
I am.
So, why don't you tell us what you guys are looking to do, and then we'll read some correspondence and go from there.
All right. Good evening, Jamie Dusnet, Xena Consulting Engineers. I'm here for Mr. Pike and Ms. Garbutt. They, this, the existing house here, they live in, I believe, with her mom, and the Garbuts have lived there for a long time. Basically, what they'd like to do is take down the front portion of the house, keep the remaining back box part that's gonna remain as the in-law, and construct a new portion in the front here. I worked with them and their architect to get something to fit that would not go beyond the existing nonconformities. They had to scale back a little bit, but we kinda found something that had a nice balance. We did present it to Nate and showed him. I don't think he had much of a concern, because we're not, we're actually becoming more conforming as far as with the side setback over here. In the front, we're not getting any closer. We scaled back the porch so that it would meet the existing setbacks now, and we're here hoping for a special permit.
Okay. So, correspondence on 29 Staples Shores Road from the planning board dated March 24th. At their March 9th, 2023 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petitions to hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board had no comments regarding this petition. We also have a letter dated March 28th from the Board of Health in regards to 29 Staples Shores Road. We received a copy of the petition to hearing for 29 Staples Shores Road. The Board of Health has recently approved plans for a four-bedroom septic system, and a new well was also installed. Thus, the board does not have any objections to proposed addition to the existing dwelling providing it will have four bedrooms or less. And nothing on con con, correct?
No issues.
No issues. Okay. Well, as you said, Jamie, it looks like you guys are making it a little more conforming.
Yes.
The Board of Health doesn't know what issues with it being a four-bedroom, so still hoping to ask questions from the, the main board members? Any questions? Concerns? Anyone in the audience would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, well, at this point, seems how no one has any questions, assuming someone may wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Motion to approve the special permit as applied for, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I don't think you need us to tell you the process, do you?
I don't, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, at this point, our next agenda item is the continuation of Bedford Street, so I am going to step down and turn it over to Mr. Youngquist, the chair of the meeting at this point.
Jamie's getting his board ready, so.
Appreciate your patience.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Good evening, Jamie Dusnet, Xena Consulting Engineers again. 109 Bedford Street. I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but at the last meeting, we went over the project itself, reviewed how roadway and houses would be laid out, the drainage would function, et cetera. And I know there were several discussions, I watched the meeting, and kinda went over it. So, there were some items that were brought up by Beals &amp; Thomas. We've replied to them, sent them in revised plans, which we have, and you have, and they've come back with what I would call a relatively clean letter. There weren't really any major hiccups in their letter that they had, it was a thorough analysis, and they picked up on a lot of good items. So, I wanna just kinda go over quickly the changes that we've made. We've worked with the neighbor to the south who have the horses with their fence and the encroachments. We've, what we're doing is in the front portion, gonna be giving them an easement so that their existing gas line, driveway, and utility can stay exactly where it is. We've moved the roadway so that the grading can accommodate that. So, that takes care of that issue, and they're very happy with that. In the back, what we're doing is we're also doing an easement to accommodate their horse fence. It's not gonna accommodate it completely, we're gonna have to change a portion of it so that the road can be constructed with the grading, but there are parts of it in which it'll remain, and then there'll be a part in which we have to modify. But again, we met them on-site, showed them what we were looking to do, and they seem to be pleased with what we're able to do. We were also asked to provide some vegetation up here to the north from this abut and fencing in the back here. What we've done is we've added the fencing across, as you can see, and on the landscaping plan, we showed the additional trees for screenage on this plan here.
Hey, Jamie, when you refer to them, who are they?
The abutters?
Okay.
I'm not sure how to pronounce your name, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right. It's the Coruscant East at 9 Paddock Hill that asks for vegetation.
Yep, so, we've provided that as I think suggested by the, by the board at the last meeting, so that, those trees have been placed, and then the fencing in the back here was also recommended at the last meeting, I believe by the board, and maybe some of the abutters. So, we've also shown that. What we're doing with the fencing is we're proposing it one foot onto the neighbor's property, that way they own it. You know, what we'll do is the attorney will come up with some kind of an agreement so that we can construct it, or pay to have it constructed on their property, and then they own it, it's theirs. If they don't want that, then, you know, obviously, we'll have to report back to the, to the board, but they asked for a fence, I'm sure that they'll, they'll make it work to some degree. The other thing that's kinda changed on here a little bit would be, we've added a plan called the building box plan, and the reason for that is to help us avoid future headache, if we can. The buildings themselves, we show, we show houses on each lot with zoning requirement waivers that we have listed. What we did was we took a plan and put the building boxes, because somebody might ask for an eight-foot porch instead of a 10-foot porch, a 12-foot porch, or they might wanna zag in the roof instead of, you know, it going in this direction. So, we wanted to just have some flexibility, the builder wanted to have some flexibility to be able to work within the constraints of the lot. So, we showed the houses like we typically do for a plan and a general nature on what we figure we're gonna be building, but we wanna leave ourselves open to have some flexibility in case somebody wants some customization done to the houses. So, we've added this box, building box plan, just so that the board itself knows the parameters in which, you know, we could build within, based on the waivers we've requested. Mike, was that?
Jamie, question on that. I'm not familiar with the term building box.
Sure.
So, could you explain it a little bit more of how that works?
Sure, the way that we're referring to a building box is we're taking an offset from the property line, the proposed property line, and we're saying, all right, over in here, we asked for a waiver from 20 feet to 10 feet for side yard. So, here's the 10-foot side yard setback going on this entire side. In the back, we don't need a waiver, it's 20 feet, so 20 feet across the back. In the front, here's our 40-foot setback, doesn't need a waiver. So, anything within that box that can be built and meet the area that we have the drainage designed for, which is also listed, would be fair game.
So, for each of those lots, it fits within that box, you put those same parameters for each lot?
That's correct. But each lot, each lot, each lot has its own tweaks. For example, this lot, right here, Lot 10, the house that we're showing on the proposed layout, has an 18-foot setback from the back part of the building to the property line. So, what we've done is we're showing with our waiver, we asked for from 20 feet to an 18-foot reduction. So, it's a two-foot waiver down. So, we're showing that two-foot waiver and saying, this is the box, and this is the back of the box, in which we have to construct a building within.
This gentleman that wanted the fence, is he, was you, is he here tonight?
Yes, yes.
What, is the fence go beyond his, where does the fence go? All the way down to the street?
No, 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 not on that side of the road. The fence on this side of the road goes for the two, the two lots that have houses on that. There are two vacant lots further down that don't have houses, that we're not putting, proposing fences on. So, fence starts, fence starts here at this property line of Mr. Reed, and ends at just our hand, right there.
Say again?
Would you like to come up here and speak up here? Charlie Hanley, 5 Paddock Hill Drive.
Right.
I was asking about the fence. I have a stockade-type fence now.
Right.
That I, that I put up, it's part of the, part of the front, actually, it's back at the, by the front of my house, it separates the front and backyard, goes down on the right-hand side, if you look from the street, and that's, I'd like it possible to match.
Jamie?
I think that we're proposing a wooden stockade-style fence.
Okay.
Six foot tall, that's what I believe we were asked to do.
Okay, it's, yeah, it would, that would work.
Yeah, that's, that's our intention, is a wooden stockade fence, six foot tall.
And that's, if I understand correctly, that's one foot back until?
That's one foot until you're on it, yeah.
Okay, in the, the back of the building, it's gonna be in the butter to me, that's how far from the property line?
Two feet.
It's 20 feet?
Yeah.
There's more than one, is it both? Are they all 20 feet? So, Mike's telling me that they'd be 20 feet.
So, the ones that are gonna be behind, how many are there?
Looks like two and a half.
There's, this is a partial one.
Okay, I see.
Property's from here, so there's one, two, yep. About two and a half.
And are those gonna have elevated decks?
You mean second story?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, but that could, that could happen.
Will the edges then be 20 feet?
Yes.
So, that would push the whole building out?
Yeah, I mean, unless we've requested a waiver, which Mike's telling me we have on those three lots.
We comply with the, you guys said.
The 20-foot setback, yeah, so, I'd have to switch to the building box plan, I'm sorry. One more.
20, 20, yeah, 20 feet, so that meets the zoning setback, so yeah, they would be 20 feet or greater.
Okay, so, all right, I get you, so if there was a back porch, would the whole hill would go out to the depth of the porch, correct?
The deck.
The foundation.
The closest structure should be, if it's gonna be a deck, would be 20 feet, and then they would go further away.
Okay, I get it, okay. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Do you have no, no other questions?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, is there any other abutter who has questions, comments? Is there representation of Beals &amp; Thomas here? Do you wanna make your finger here, or you might as well say something?
Sure. So, for the record, Matt Cody from Beals &amp; Thomas, peer review engineer on behalf of the board for this project, and we offered some initial correspondence back in February, and most recently responded in March 10th, and as the applicant has indicated, the letter came back fairly clean, and there are some things in there for the board's consideration, you know, relative to the waivers and different things that they're asking for, but nothing that we see is, you know, troubling or too concerning. One thing we do know is that they are showing some snow storage areas adjacent to the stormwater basin, which we prefer they would, you know, not do that, move those away from that basin so that snow is not impacting that basin, as far as contaminants or whatever that's picked up from the plowing operations. Again, there was, you know, multiple waivers, you know, the way through the dead-end street, you know, if the fire department onboarded that, those kinds of concerns, you know, from planting sidewalks, there's a tree waiver they're requesting, but again, nothing that's like a deal breaker in our minds, more just to the discretion of the board whether we're willing to grant those waivers or not. But certainly here, available for any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, Michael O'Shaughnessy, speaking with Mark Resnick. He'd ask that we show you a plan where we'd like the affordable units to go, and I have them here if you guys are interested in taking a look.
Before we get too much further, I'd like to motion somebody to enter this plan onto the record.
I'll make a motion. Any second?
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay.
So, as you can see, we've noted our proposed lots, the big red, big letter, red letter A, we're proposing the affordables on Lot 1, 4, and 8. We've got them dispersed throughout the development, they'll be indistinguishable from one another from the market rate units when we're building this, and I think that's all the new information we have, and we have no further information to present, and we'd love to have a conversation about any conditions if the board had any, and hopefully, we can move this along to a decision here.
Mike, are the affordable, single-family, everything's a single-family?
Everything's a single-family, three-bedroom units.
What was the process by which you identified each of the affordable unit lots?
Whatever ones we deemed that suited the developer, if you guys aren't amenable to these locations, we're willing to shift them, but we, every third or fourth ones generally how it goes.
You marked pretty well, set in a test. I think they're reasonably placed, yeah. Is there any other comments from the, yes?
I just, I just, I just wanted to ensure that the fence is gonna be something decent that will last at least a little while, and not, not the paper-thin ones that come from a fence company. The one I put up, it's, I'm not sure if it's, I think it's spruce, it's spruce wood, it's three-quarters of an inch thick, and it's got the corners cut and the top, and the boards are so wide, something similar, that's all.
You want something similar?
Yeah.
Can you provide something similar?
Do you see any issue with that? I think what we could do is, Chairman, is take a look and match it up as best we can.
Okay.
It's, it's made with springboard.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess one question I have to add to Beals &amp; Thomas's recommendation of the snow storage area near the infiltration basin, their pension pond, maybe a couple of signs at the end of the road that says no snow, no snow storage here, 'cause you know that the person plowing it's just gonna put the snow there, even though the plan says not there.
So, we, we were in front of conservation this week, which we received in order conditions for the project, and that was actually, not the signage, but the not-woningly snow plowed into the basin was one of their conditions on their order, so.
I think the signs, or something's a good idea, 'cause your kid's gonna come in there and plow, and he's not gonna know any different.
I don't think we would be opposed to a sign at the end, you know, you know, it's a 24-foot wide dead end, so yeah, I think one sign would probably be sufficient, so, not opposed to that if that's what the board wants.
Okay. Is there any other questions from anybody? Hearing none. Don't give a damn.
We could close the hearing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the hearing is closed. We will work out the details for the final approval, draft, whatever.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll work with Mark and Amy, and the only condition that I heard the board wanted was the signage at the end of the way for the snow storage, is that there?
Yeah.
Okay. If I may ask, were there any changes in the plan set that any of the board members wanted, or are we pretty happy with the plan set itself?
On the affordable, affordable lot?
And on, on the plan, the full presentation set as well, just, you know, for moving forward purposes, and Mike writing up the conditions with, I just wanna make sure that, that everything is satisfactory.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. Okay, excellent.
Mr. Chairman, when, when do you think we'll be able to meet with the board again with?
How about next month?
Oh, that'd be awesome.
April twentieth?
Sounds good.
Can we do it by April twentieth? Okay.
No, I, I have no idea about, about the project, so anytime's fine, I'll pick, I'll, I'll come up to see.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Do you want, you're done, if you wanna?
I'm gonna take care of you right now, sir.
Okay, good.
Alright, so, um, I am going to take one item out of order, so Mr. Youngquist can participate, since he will not be here for the next hearing. We do have some, uh, meeting minutes to approve for February sixteenth, which were included in our packets. If you've had any chance to review them, I will be more than happy to entertain a motion to approve them, or if anybody needs to make any changes, we can incorporate that as well.
I need to abstain.
Okay, Jerry's gonna abstain, cause he wasn't there, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to reapprove, but they.
Not surprised you are, do we have a second?
Certainly.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Jerry's gonna abstain, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved, no changes. Thank you very much, Mr. Youngquist.
Okay.
We'll see you next month, if not sooner. April twentieth.
April twentieth.
Okay, our, well, I don't wanna say our final agenda item, but our final hearing related item is the continuation of the residences at La Barron Hills LLC, uh, comprehensive permit modification. See, Counselor Mather is here on behalf of the applicant, so, you're up, Bob.
Thank you.
Tell us what you've been doing.
I'll tell you what I've been doing on this project.
That's all I want to hear, Bob.
Again, Mr. Chairman, for your record, my name is Robert Mather, I represent the petitioner. Again, we are here for a modification to phase five, um, we've had our initial hearings, the plans have been reviewed. Um, I didn't realize Mr. Cody was going to be here, it was nice to meet you. Um, so I think what we were planning on doing today was reacting to, um, the review engineers' review of the project.
That would be helpful.
Um, I put together, um, a summary, um, of, um, the items, kinda tried to separate the items. There were multiple items that, um, Mr. Cody stated that they've been adequately addressed. There were some that regard the Conservation Commission, some that are deferred to the ZBA, um, the Fire Department, and some other miscellaneous items, so I put together a little agenda. I don't think I brought enough copies, I didn't really have any details.
We can share. So, I have this.
Oh, you do, okay, I'm gonna give one to Mr. Cody.
Thank you.
So what, um, I noted in the first item is there were multiple, um, items that Mr. Cody said have been adequately addressed. I won't mention those unless, of course, the board has any, any questions on those. Um, there were a couple of, uh, items that were in regard to the Conservation Commission, and so just quickly, can you give us a recap of where we are with the Conservation, um, Commission, we'll let you know? Because those items, items number two and nineteen, um, would apply with the Conservation Commission.
How you doing, Jason Youngquist, Topak Engineering, uh, we were with the Conservation Commission on Tuesday evening, um, to go over their revised plans and, and the project. Um, I went over the fact that most, uh, engineering items are, have pretty much all been addressed through the review from Beals and Thomas. Um, they are also hiring Beals and Thomas to review the project from a wetland standpoint, the wetland line. Obviously, he's already reviewed the drainage and all that stuff, so it'd just be more of the notice of intent filing and, and the wetland line, and, and there's a little bit of wet area up on top of the field that they wanted to all discuss. So, they continued it until, uh, Beals and Thomas can complete their review of the, the wetland line. Um, again, we don't feel like it's gonna change, cause it's at the bottom of a hill, uh, it's about a twenty foot drop right down into the wetlands, not much room for, uh, debate there, um, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Um, if the board were so inclined to move forward, uh, today, we would, of course, suggest and accept a condition that is subject to the, uh, final receipt of all permits and approvals from the Conservation Commission. Um, there were several comments that were deferred to the ZBA. One was the waiver request, uh, and at the time when it was reviewed, we didn't have a waiver request, we have since submitted that to the board. It's one of the items that's, um, in the package that I, I gave to you. Um, also, the traffic impacts, um, Mr. Cody pointed out that he's not a traffic review engineer, but he did review the traffic and, and I believe, if I put words in your mouth, please say, uh, tell me, um, that he was okay with that. Um, but remember one thing, the traffic review was done when we were contemplating doing phases five and six, and increasing the number of units, that is not the case at this point. Uh, the num- the original traffic report that was approved years ago was for three hundred and eighty-six units, so we are, we are still well under that amount. Um, and there was also a request for clarification of the, uh, design intent for the site lighting. One thing that's important to note that, is so what we're doing here is we're just expanding phase five, putting up three buildings. They're gonna look just like the other buildings that are, that are there, the parking, the lighting, um, is all similar to, um, to what's there. Um, if there is any additional information that the board wants regarding that, you know, fine, we'd be glad to, to provide that. There were a few comments that were deferred to the Fire Department, um, everything has been sent to the Fire Department, has been reviewed. We haven't heard any comments from them, and I don't believe the board has received any, um, any negative or any comments at all on it. Um, but again, we certainly do recognize that the applicant will be required to comply with any conditions imposed by the Fire Department, um, especially in regard to the two items that, uh, Mr. Cody, um, mentions, which is the adequacy of the emergency, um, access, and the adequacy of the firefighting provisions. He'll have to, we'll have to, um, comply with that. Mr. Cody, also in three, it's several of the items suggested, um, conditions, um, and mentioned, um, for items number five and eight, for example, that the applicant should document full, um, mass architectural access board and ADA compliance during the building permit process, that would certainly be, we would expect that condition. Um, item number ten, that the applicant should document and conform adequate capacity is available in the water distribution network during the building permit review process. Um, and item number twenty-one, that the applicant should provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to construction. Um, and then there were just a couple of items, I didn't know what, uh, what category to put them under, so I put them under, under miscellaneous. Um, a mention of the parking requirements and the architectural plans. We have not submitted the final architectural plans because, um, Mr. Itani, you know, wanted to know that the board was okay with the concept and to proceed forward with the final plans. But the beauty of this particular phase is, we already know what they're gonna look like, because they're gonna look just like the, um, the buildings that are, are there. Um, and obviously, um, before we get our building permit, we'll have to submit the full architectural, um, plans. So, and we, we don't have the architectural plans, but we do have the renderings that, same ones that we had presented, uh, before. The style is exactly the same type style, um, it, it does fit in. Um, one of the things that Mr. Cody pointed out is that, you know, the, the architectural plans should document the character of the proposed buildings relative to the surrounding uses. Well, the surrounding uses are, in, in that particular area, identical to that. Um, so, um, I think that's a, um, a summary of what the, um, the review is. Um, we were, quite frankly, very happy with the, the review and the review process. Um, we only had to, um, respond once to the, uh, the requests of, of Mr. Cody and brought us here at this point. Um, I don't know if, um, you would like to make a, any kind of statement at this point, or unless the board has any questions for Mr. Cody on, on these items.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you wanna just either confirm that Attorney Mather is on?
Yep, so again, for the record, Matt Cody, Beals and Thomas, the peer review engineer on behalf of the board for this project. Um, as the applicant has indicated, you know, this is a pretty accurate summary of where we, you know, stood after our letter of March twenty-third. Um, I guess our one, yeah, the one kind of outstanding comment we had was that, you know, some clarification on the parking. Uh, it wasn't clear with the, the number of stripes and things on the, on, that were depicted in the pavement, like how many spots there were, where the spots were. Um, so just a clarification there, and again, getting back to like the ADA compliance, you know, where those handicap spaces are being put, and again, in relation to the kind of layout of the parking, but other than that, unless the applicant said, most, you know, most of these things are either addressed or gonna be no waivers, discretion of the board.
So the comment on the architectural, uh, design, um, referencing the rendering, you, you just wanna make sure it's gonna look similar to what's there?
Oh, to the satisfaction, again, but you just, so, yeah, just, we just noticed it wasn't something that was provided where it typically is, and just, you know, typically it's an interest of the board to know what these buildings are gonna look like, not understanding that they're, yeah, they look similar to the ones that are already out there, yeah, we're comfortable with that.
Okay. Back to the, hang on, back to the parking, um, so where are we with the parking right now? So you would make comments that.
I mean, we're, we are providing more spaces than are required, so Jason, why don't you cross?
So we're providing additional spot, every unit has its own spot in the garage and a spot out front, so every unit has two spots right off the bat. And then, uh, the way it's drawn out, there's another extra spot in front, and then we provided additional parking in the central island for visitor parking. Uh, and we put some handicap parking in that area, in those, uh, visitor spots. So each unit with its two spots right off the bat has sufficient parking for the whole place.
So what's a contingency if, if someone starts to use their garages as storage, right, and then that parking becomes unavailable?
Well, that's why we have the extra spots, but.
So, why do they have those?
You know, required to have two spots per unit, we have that right, right away, we actually have.
I can answer that, actually, the homeowner, uh, Mohammed.
Come on up, so we can catch you on the mic.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Mohammed Ayteni, I'm with the developer, uh, La Barron Hills LLC. Uh, typically, the homeowners association polices those things, so, so the visitor parking cars are not allowed to be there for more than three days, otherwise they have to get a special permit from the homeowners association. So if somebody decides to use their garage as storage, they only have one additional parking spot, and they cannot use the visitor parking. So visitor parking is only for visitors, and, and the homeowners association polices it. Usually, they don't unless it gets abused, right, I mean, they call us, they say, hey, what do you think, this car has been parked there for a week? Somebody is coming from spring break, visiting their parents or something, and just like, you know, what, we can ask him to go park their car somewhere else. They, they usually tolerate people staying there, but not, not forever, I mean, it's not like everyday use where somebody uses the visitor parking all the time, for, it's really intended for visitors. And, and, uh, we've had people go find parking, uh, spots somewhere else, uh, you know, if, if, they, 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 each unit comes with two parking spots, and we have, we have visitor parking, how many visitor parking we have?
That's the question.
Give me one second. Looks like.
So they must have had to count the parking spaces out, so, because they need to know, so, whether they get a waiver or not, so they must have it somewhere. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so each unit, this is, this is a unit, it gets its garage, and it actually gets two more spots outside its garage door, so somebody can park immediately outside the garage door, plus, they can park a car right there, right next to it, so, immediately outside each unit, there are two parking spots, but somebody can park inside the garage, so technically each unit comes with, with three parking spots, one inside the garage and two outside the garage.
No, that's not how the picture is, the picture has two garages.
No, no, see, this is, this is from here to there.
But, okay, so the one that the car's in, that's only one spot?
Just, the, the end unit, Amy, the end unit gets another spot outside their garage. But every other unit, you can see between this line and this line, you have one car gets parked here, and another car gets parked there.
So are those shown, well, those aren't shown, the plan shows all of, all of the, all of the spots the same distance, or at least most of them. So how are you showing those on the plan?
That's.
Those are all on the plan.
They're, they're on the, the, the original, the old plan didn't have them that way, right?
Correct, we fixed that.
Now, that got, that got changed, Amy, you might have the older plans.
I have plans that are, um.
Do you have that?
With the peer review comments three, ten, twenty-three, I think it's a three, it might be a two. Even though I have my glasses on, I can't tell, it's very small. Oh, I have it on here, I can just blow it up on here.
So you have those spots written into there.
So, 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 yeah, the plans were modified to show those parking spots, and those plans were based in.
Three, ten, twenty-three.
Three, ten, twenty-three.
That's what I have.
So what, what page is this?
Page two.
Yep, that's what I have, so, I'm not seeing where you have double spaces.
If you wanna look at, look at this ten unit building, and count how many spaces you have outside, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, should be eighteen, I missed one, one, two, three, four, five.
So.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
You must know the total number of parking spaces.
Yeah, there's eighteen parking spots.
Right, you must know the total number.
Of what?
Of parking spaces, for this face.
Eighteen in front of ten unit buildings?
There is eighteen parking spots.
No, no, for the total, for the face.
No, but just, let's, let's, just trying to answer how, how people park in the building. So there is ten units to this building, there are eighteen parking spots outside that building, and there are ten garages belong to that building as well, so, so if you have each ten unit building, it's gonna get twenty-eight parking spots, so you have two point eight parking spots per unit, uh, that are in front of the building. On top of that, we added, uh, visitor parking.
That's what we wanna know, how many spots did you add?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, I knew you would know.
Twenty-two, and out of these, what did you?
You could've just said it at the beginning, okay, we're done, that was all I needed to know, the twenty-two.
That's fine. And we, we allow handicap parking for the visitors, but the units themselves, people can park in their driveway, you don't need a, a handicap parking for your own unit, if it's your own driveway. And those, those are townhouses, so most likely we're not gonna get, you know, uh, out of the thirty-five units, I believe, twenty-nine are townhouses.
So you have three, you have three units, three affordable units that are, um, that are end units, so they do not get three parking spots, they only get two, correct?
No, we do, we do, one of those spots out there will be actually allocated to the corner units, so.
So now you're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, twenty-two minus eight.
Fourteen.
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 Minus four in the count.
Now you only have, yeah, now you only have fourteen visitor spaces and ten, or four handicaps, so ten regular visitor spaces.
That's right, and again, remember, each unit, on average, gets two point eight, two point eight parking spots, so most units get three, three parking spots, except for ten units, they get, they get, uh.
No, they have three, everybody's got three.
Everybody gets three. And it's only required two.
So we're gonna put a condition in that the, the end units are gonna have an allocated spot?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Cody, I did note in your report, you did indicate the number of total required spaces. I don't have it in front of me. Do you-
I believe that we do have a super unit.
Well, in the total, and you did point out that we had more than the required amount.
I know this is the rendering. You had a question around the height. Do you have an idea of what the height is, first, if compared to the other buildings in the-
I don't have that.
The question he's concerned is, how does that compare to what's the existing buildings? I mean, how-
The biggest, so all this building, or is it the kind of-
Exactly the same as the buildings next to it.
In phase five.
In phase five. So, we already have four buildings, and we're adding four buildings. So, this is exactly like the four buildings that are there.
Do you have any additional comments?
I have nothing additional unless the board has any questions.
Find out in a second. You good? Anyone else on behalf of the Barron's have any comments? I know there's a few of yous here, so.
Yes, I don't believe we have any.
Okay. Other questions from the board at this point, and I will get to the audience in a second.
Is this section in phase five age restricted?
It's not.
It's not.
No questions. Do we have anyone in the audience who has a question? Come on up and move your name in. Where you live.
Hi, Donna Caromer. I live in the Barron's States. I'm just a little confused. Are these going next to where the fairways are, or are we talking the area near Fern?
That's to the fairways.
This is next to fairways. So, I guess that's why I'm confused, because the last time we were talking, you were talking about the building near Fern. So-
We would do that. We would, we're going to be resubmitting that, but for now, we're not doing it. For now, we're only-
You can go ahead.
I need to talk to the chairman.
So, yeah. Yeah, so this is the new one. This is the, is this the one under construction?
And they go, look, just like the other nice townhouses. Sounds good.
Any other comments, questions?
She just actually asked my question.
Perfect. Two birds with one stone. Amy?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add?
I did have a couple of questions on, on the Beals &amp; Thomas, the March 23rd, although Bob addressed, he addressed one of them. I guess I'm confused about, you said that the conservation commission is deferring the waiver to us, or to the ZBA? The waiver under the wetland protection, is that what you said? You said waiver request has been submitted to the ZBA under number one of your comments? Or, I'm sorry, on your outline number three, and then-
No, that was, we, Mr. Cody pointed out that there were no specific requests for waivers. So, we had those prepared. They, exhibit A-
Oh, okay, because I thought you were talking about the conservation commission at the time. Okay. So, that's why I had, I did have that. I did note that we do have, we essentially have a traffic report, but it is, you know, it's not geared towards this exact project, but it is over. It's geared towards a larger project.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah.
So, so I did go back and look at the conclusions of that, and I didn't see any, any concerns with that. And then, the clarification for the site light, site lighting. You guys haven't really gone over that with the plan yet.
We've shown lighting on the plan. We have shown some parking lot lights, and there's lights on the buildings as well.
So, they're all going to comply with dark sky compliant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we're saying the same lighting from phase five.
Yep, okay. That was it. And my comments, those are the only things that I had questions on, so. I appreciate and agree with the suggested conditions from Beals &amp; Thomas.
So, I'll make the rounds one more time. Do you have any follow-up questions? Okay. So, at this point, I think the petition would like us to move this forward, correct?
That is correct. I mean, of course, we understand that the decision, the vote, the findings will come afterwards. They are, they are much more extensive than what you have in a, in a normal special permit finding. But we've done it five times before. So, I would assume that the vote of approval would be conditioned upon the final decision comprehensive, modification decision.
What I might suggest at this point is that are we comfortable, and we'll probably just have you review the conditions to make sure that we have at this point, sending the attorneys to go and draft and come back and final approvals?
That's how we've done it on the last several.
Right.
So, they wouldn't vote tonight. They're directing me to draft an approval with conditions?
Yes. I mean, we would like the board to approve the concept, subject to the approval of the conditions. So, Mr. Itani knows that he can go forward with his architecturals and go to the, go to the next step. But I think we've done that in the past.
Right, but, but by directing me to draft an approval with conditions, they're fine, they're good. If they, if they vote on the project tonight, we have to file a decision within 14 days. And I'm not going to do that. I can't.
Well, we would like, I think we pretty much have it, but then I would ask the chairman to, for a straw vote of the board members.
I think, I think basically, what we're looking for is consensus that we're good with what we talked about, where we are, and attorneys have to get the paperwork done.
Yeah, we've, in the past, if I remember correctly, it's been at least 30 days that we've done the conditions on it. It's a pretty big job.
Okay. So, Amy, do you mind reading back what conditions we are probably going to incorporate into this?
So, we're going to, we're going to incorporate all of the conditions in the Beals &amp; Thomas March 23rd peer review letter. We're going to put in standard conditions that we put in every, in every decision with regard to timing and, you know, having a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, all of those things. And then, we are going to put in a condition that the affordable units, the end, or no, I'm sorry, all end units have to have a allocator dedicated spot. And the only, I would need to see the existing homeowners association documents to determine if we have to make any conditions based on those. And the only reason we do that is in case the existing homeowners association documents do not somehow work with this kind of development. I don't, I don't think that's going to happen because they have another phase that's just like this. But if there's anything in there, we would just condition that they don't, they're not, that's not applicable to them, kind of thing. And that's about it.
We'll get those to you right away.
And so, when do you think you'll be done with the conservation commission, since they're going out to peer review?
They've already gotten the price from the peer review. Mohammed already signed the contract, paid the check, and it should be, they should be getting the site visiting, everything going.
So, when did you continue to? Do you remember?
April 10th, Tuesday. April 10th, around there.
Why don't we ask Mr. Cody?
I was just going to say, are you involved enough to know if they'll be ready for the 10th for the ConCon?
They're doing the sidewalk.
April 10th is something.
And to go through the line. We had a brief flat. The old line expired, so we had a brief flat. I don't think there were any changes, but just like, it's exactly the same location because it's a steep drop, and the wetland line is better here. You can't really miss it. And we're away from it. Even if that line moves 10 feet this way or that way, it doesn't, it doesn't impact us. So, they did schedule a sidewalk for the fourth phase one. Does that make sense?
I don't know the date on the sidewalk. I know the hearing is continued to the 10th.
Is that the sidewalk?
The 10th to hearing, I don't know on the sidewalk.
Yeah, but there's, there's emails going back and forth. But if there are any part of April, they're going to schedule a sidewalk, and then, and then they're going to go for the-
Can I ask a condition on that? I mean, we can condition it anyways. It takes longer, and our condition says it has to be ConCon. You guys got to work on-
We have no, we expect that.
So, I guess that, yeah, I guess it's up to the applicant. If they want to close this tonight, they would just, they would be, they would be in a tough spot if ConCon made them move something.
Yeah. I discussed that specifically with the client, to ask if there was any chance that the ConCon would make any kind of a change that would affect what the board is approving tonight. And I believe the answer was no.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's like I said, it's a steep hill, and the wetland line is right at the bottom of the hill, and it really didn't change anything. We just had a brief flat.
You make the decision at your own peril.
That's correct.
The other option is to keep it open, but we still work on the decision. So, then-
You want to keep it open and work on the decision, or you want the decision tonight?
Well, we're not making a decision tonight.
Right. We would, right, they would close it tonight. If you want them to close it. If they close it, then they can't accept any of the information from the commission because they're closing the hearing.
I think we're comfortable with that.
Okay. The risk you run is if there's a problem with the commission.
Right. And we specifically-
And it sounds like Mohammed is overly confident that there's going to be no issues.
I mean, no issues that would result in the change of the plans that the board has approved.
Always happens.
So, okay.
Can I ask a point of clarification for the Beals &amp; Thomas? When you say they have to follow what's in the report, if it's a recommendation-
Yep.
Is that still followed by the applicant?
Right, we turn that into a condition.
Okay.
Yep. We're going to turn those into conditions.
If it's a recommendation, it's still requiring now. Okay.
Right. I mean, the ones that can be done, I know there was comments about the traffic, but not, you know, that, we, I, we're good with that because I went back and I looked at the traffic report.
Yeah, like I, I'm more specific to the term like number five in the, in the Beals &amp; Thomas report, which is about the sidewalks and the ramps for MAB and ADA.
Yep. Those are standard.
Right.
Yep. Those are standard comments. The SWIP, that's a standard comment, things like that, that we would, we would put in every decision. It's just nice that he laid them out, so I can remember that they're all there.
Which council's already confirmed.
I repeated all the conditions he had.
Okay. Unless we have any other questions, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second motion?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. For the discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, at this point, we're not going to take a vote, but we do have a, this is the way I'm going to phrase it. Do we have a consensus that we are good with the conditions that were outlined by council, and the proceeding forward with having the petition's representation and the town's representation come up with the order of conditions, and then we will formally vote on them at the next meeting?
Yeah. Is this on record now?
Well, Amy, I, you want to answer that question? It's just on record. We can, we're directing council to do this, but at the end of the day, if something isn't really right, we don't have to go forward, but-
If you took a poll, or you came to a consensus, it's based on the information you have in front of you now.
Right.
So, when you have a decision in front of you, you know, one of my decisions, I mean, this is an amendment, so it's not one of the huge ones that we have to look at. But if something comes up then, that's, you know, you're not held to what you say tonight.
Okay. So, I think we've finished this for the evening.
So, the only issue is that I'm not available on April 20th. I can have my decision ready for you to go through.
I was just going to say, if you can get it ready, we can, we'll take it up at the finish line.
And I can maybe even put in comments if I think that there would be questions on certain things, but-
Yeah. Well, you and I can catch up prior to the meeting.
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay. All right. We'll see you folks back on April. Thank you.
So, Bob, oh, I'm sorry. Bob, so we'll, we have to get the decision done a week ahead of time, okay? So, John and I can go over it. So, by the 13?
No problem. I'll get you the, Mohammed will get the HOA information.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, what, Amy, what we're going to do, we're going to send you the existing one.
Yeah, that's all.
And we're going to change the number.
We have any other business coming before this board?
I don't have any.
We have a motion to adjourn until our next meeting on April 20th.
So, maybe.
We have a second. Motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.